This is Michelle. I'm the Chair of the School Improvement Bond Committee and a member of the school board. And I'll pass it to, how about John Lyons?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Lyons. I'm an architect in the planning group at PPS. And I'm here to talk about long-range facility plan. I will pass it to Dan Young.
Hello, everyone. Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer. Good to see everyone. And I'll pass it to Mr. Peterson.
Hi, I'm Tom Peterson. I'm on the BAC, the co-chair, and I'll be giving a little update later this evening. And I'll pass it on to Scott.
I'm Scott Bailey, board member, not on this committee. Been involved with facilities for a long time. Amy.
Good afternoon. This is Amy Constam. I serve on the board. Nice to see you all.
Do you want to pass it to someone, Amy?
Oh, sorry about that. How about Marina?
Thank you, Marina Cresswell. I'm the Senior Director for the Office of School Modernization. And I will pass it to Deputy Superintendent Hertz.
Well, I've just been introduced, so I'm glad to be here with you, Claire Hertz. And I'm going to pass it to our new CFO.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Alberto Delgado. And I will, oh geez, it's like one of those right towards the end. To Karina Ruiz.
Hello, everyone. I'm Karina Ruiz. I am one of the founding principles of Brick Architecture. And we are honored to serve as the consultant doing your long-range plan. We'll be helping John with the presentation this afternoon. And I will pass it to Dr. Amara Perez.
Hi, everybody. My name is Amara Perez, and I'm also part of the project team for the facilities plan. And my role has been to be a consultant on critical race theory in this project. And I will pass it to Cara Bradshaw.
Hi, I'm Cara Bradshaw. I'm the Executive Assistant to the Board. And I'll pass it to Dana White.
Hi, I'm Dana White. I'm the Director for Planning and Real Estate.
Maybe last.
I think Director Scott is last. So it has to go last.
Yep, absolutely. I'm Andrew Scott, a board member and a member of this committee. Glad to be here.
Thank you, everybody. Did we? I'm sorry.
Is Mary with us? I see Mary.
I am. I am. Sorry, I didn't know about the meeting, so I'm on a run with my kids. But Mary Weiner, I'm managing the Instructional Resource Adoption for OTO.
Has everyone had a chance to introduce themselves?
Well, I'll just chime in and say, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Roseanne Powell, the Board Manager.
Who should have probably gone first. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We don't, unless Roseanne got something that I don't know about.
I have not.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda then is the update from the Office of School Modernization. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Director DePass. I'll go ahead and get started with that. I'll try to go through briefly, but I tend towards wordy, so give me the high sign if I speak too much. 2012 program, we're 98% spent. We have two primary projects still sitting on the 2012 program. And that includes Roosevelt Phase Four and the Grant Upper Fields Improvement. Roosevelt Phase Four, we have some delays due to permitting, but the work is proceeding. We'd hope to have the new extension to that wing completed for the start of the 21-22 school year. But we are now working like October for our completion. And we are working closely with the administration as far as accommodating that change to the schedule. For Grant Upper Fields Improvement, we're generally on schedule with that. However, we are in the middle of land use permitting, and that has a tendency to be unpredictable. So we continue to look for opportunities to improve the construction time. We do still have some funds available.
Excuse me, may I interrupt just to ask, as you're giving the update there, the materials, we have the materials in front of us. Are you going from the BAC presentation? Or in our meeting materials packet, are you referencing our meeting materials?
All of this information is in the materials, however, the materials that you receive are the same materials that we present to the BAC. And that is typically a two-hour-plus presentation, so I try to summarize. Just trying to get us through quickly with just a quick overview.
Okay, I appreciate that you're trying to hit the high points. And I was just wondering if it would be helpful for people to follow along. But I understand that you're hitting the high tops, not the full in-depth report. So thank you.
So just to note that we do still have some funds available within the 2012 program to accommodate any additional budget needs for the two projects that we have sitting out there. For 2017, we're...
Excuse me, Marina, one second. Before you move on from 2012, I understand that the two pieces that you just highlighted are work that's ongoing. But aside from that, does that mean that we're completely closed out on our contracts from 2012? For example, Grant had been outstanding for a while.
We are not completely closed out on all contracts for 2012 projects. We're working through all of those right now. We've come to agreement with the grant contract. We are just finishing up the final audit for that contract. So it is not closed out yet, but it will be soon.
Okay, but we've come to agreement. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. 55% spent on 2017 program. Kellogg, substantial completion has been reached. And we are in the middle of installing FFME, furniture fixtures and equipment. We are working with other PPS departments to transition to operations. And we are currently projecting the project to come in $1 million under budget. McDaniel High School. As I've said before, McDaniel is the modernization for 2017 that had the tightest of schedules. We have not had great luck with delays related to COVID and the wildfires that we had over the summer. Those did impact our schedule. It will be tight. However, we have been working very closely with the contractor, doing overtime in very selective ways, whether it's critical path items or clearing other tasks that needed to be done in order to maintain critical path. And we are also working internally with a transition team that's made up of members of, it feels like pretty much every single department at PPS, since everybody's impacted by this. So we are working closely to talk through the schedule coordination for McDaniel High School to move out of Marshall and into its new site. We are anticipating it will be completed on budget. However, that does not include COVID-related costs. And I think I've said this before, too, that our strategy with COVID costs has been that if our projects are able to pay for those costs out of their existing project budgets, they will. And the amounts that they cannot pay for out of their budgets will be paid for out of the program. And I've already been setting aside funding to do so. But to the extent we can keep it within the project budgets we have, it does not look like we will be able to pay for all of those COVID costs out of the McDaniel budget. Lincoln is still on schedule. It is also still on budget. The steel structure, the roofing, exterior panels, CMU walls at the gym, all of those things have been completed. I think if you are around there, you'll see that the shapes of the buildings are there. Most of the extra envelope looks pretty solid. And we have interior framing in progress as well. There are some risks ahead of us. We still anticipate staying within budget. For Benson, the swing site work is progressing. We've been working hard with our teams and with the transition team to coordinate all of the moves over the summer. And just a good note with the transition team that that includes moving Benson into Kenton and Marshall, those two swing sites, as well as moving McDaniel out of Marshall. And just a note, too, on the impacts to PPS operations as a whole. At the same time, we're completing Kellogg. And so we have been working hard to transition Kellogg to operations now so that the rest of the PPS teams that have to do work within there can get in, do their work there, and then move to swing sites and changes to, you know, the campuses of Benson and McDaniel. So it's a delicate dance. We're definitely working hard with lots of different folks to make it work. The Benson team is currently negotiating aspects of the GMP with our CMGC contractor. Our initial cost estimates at the 50% CD phase came in over budget. However, the team worked hard to get back on budget in order to be approved and move forward. With MPG, they are on schedule. They recently completed their 100% SD phase. The initial cost estimates for the, at the 100% SD phase did come in very high. However, the team is still reviewing all of the costs line by line. And we will, of course, work on value engineering as necessary in order to get back down the budget. We're certainly not complete with that set of cost estimates. There's still quite a bit of work to do. However, we've certainly also been sharing out that information with our steering committees and with our BAC because we want to provide full awareness that these are costs that we're working very hard to get back under control. One last quick note for Benson. We are expecting to fence off the site middle of June. 2020. Not a lot to report on the 2020 work, other than we are working hard to get all of our structures in place for it. Structures certainly means staffing for new projects. So of course, we need new staff in order to take on additional work because our existing staff are already very busy on 2012 and 2017. We also have new processes and procedures that we're putting in place to accommodate work being done by the Office of Teaching and Learning, Otis, our technology folks, and others who are moving forward some of the work scope under the 2020 bond. So we've been working very hard on that. We also are putting together implementation plans for several of the scopes of work for the 2020 bond that we'll be bringing forward in front of the SIBC later. The program as a whole has been increasing staffing to make sure that we have support in place to manage all three of those programs. Adding the 2020 bond was certainly adding a significant amount of work. And so not only do we need new project managers, we also need new support staff to help us with invoicing, with finance, with contracts, any number of operational supports that allow them, the work, to move forward efficiently. We are also, as a program, working very closely with our performance auditors on fieldwork for year three. They anticipate having a final report in early July. They have started talking with us about a draft work plan for year four. And we expect to take that to the BAC for review in our May meeting. And that concludes my portion of the report. Unless you have questions.
No one has questions, or I should ask, does anyone have questions about what you just heard? And seeing that there are none, we should move on then to the Bond Accountability Committee update. And that would be you, Tom.
Okay, well, thank you all for, one, keeping me around. I didn't expect to be here, but I'm still here. So I'm the only remaining member of the original BAC. So, and have kind of volunteered to co-chair with Kini Chi to kind of make the transition with the new BAC. And I have to say, you know, I've been around for a long time, but I'm really excited about the new, the makeup of the new BAC, which is part of the reason why I volunteered to chair. And so I think, for the first time, I think we've achieved diversity of perspectives and backgrounds that we've been struggling with, have been struggling with for many years. So I'm excited about that. However, with that, there's a lot of new people. Within the last year, there were three new members added to the BAC in 2020, and now four more. So we have a pretty, pretty new group of folks, although a very competent group of people. But, and then with the addition of the 2020 bond and the challenges with trying to cover everything, we're approaching the bond program a little differently. So I think if you saw my report, there's, we had an off-site in January instead of our usual report. And in that, we, besides getting to know each other, we had a chance to kind of rethink, how do we want to function? How do we want to meet and report? How do we have more opportunities for discussions on topics opposed to predominantly our meetings where staff are trying to cover all the details, which could be overwhelming at times? So I think the key thing that we're transitioning is, and if you look at the report, is this new work plan where we're dividing it up. So when you get reports, early reports from the BAC, you're not going to get a report that covers the entire bond program. We're going to kind of bite it off in different chunks. So each time I report to you, it'll be focusing on maybe different aspects of the bond as opposed to the entire program, which we hope will lead to more meaningful discussions as well. So this last meeting in March, we focused primarily on the modernizations. Marina touched on most of the stuff that we covered. I'm going to just add a few comments to some of the concerns that came out of the BAC. Kellogg's a great story, with the exception of the business equity performance. It led to a bit of a discussion because the performance was pretty low. I think it was around, let's see if my notes say. Make sure I get the right number. Anyway, less than 10%, which is pretty low. Which can be a challenge on competitively bid projects. And if you look at the history of some of the other competitively bid projects in the district, those are a little more challenging to hit aspirational goals than the negotiated work. So that was a concern. But other than that, I think everyone's pretty well pleased with how Kellogg's coming along. It came in well under budget. It looks great. Can hardly wait to get a chance to see it at some point. McDaniel has been a challenge, as Marina alluded to. The budget has been really challenged. And so hopefully, there are funds within the program to offset the anticipated overruns we're going to see on McDaniel. We also inquired about if there's any opportunity for reimbursement through the federal program for COVID relief to see if there's an opportunity to offset some of those costs. The other thing that was concerning about Daniel, and that was it's a CMGC and the business equity was very low as well. And I recall getting a presentation for McDaniel, on McDaniel, about their efforts. And I think they lost some key subs, and they've had a couple of things happen to them that are driving those numbers. But nonetheless, it's still disappointing because those types of contracts, there's generally more opportunity and generally you have better success. On Lincoln, for example, 21%. They're hitting a home run there. So, you know, what is it about McDaniel that they're not able to hit those numbers like some of the other contractors are?
Excuse me, Tom.
Yeah.
Do you have any speculation on that?
Well, I think the intent in one of our upcoming meetings is to focus on the whole business equity issue and to get a better, get a better sense of, you know, what happened there, what can we do differently? Are there different ways of reporting success? Just tracking the dollars spent is, you really don't know until it's done, and by then it's too late. So there may be some other ways that we want to look at how we approach this whole business equity. Maybe we look at, what do the contractors say and commit to? And how are they performing against what they said and committed to? Or are there other things that we can, we can look at to do a little better? But McDaniel is disappointing, given it's a CMGC contract. Usually, they can perform much better with those numbers, so.
I think it's great that the BAC is planning to focus on that. And also, our external bond performance auditor is looking at business equity numbers. And, you know, I think one of the things that you're getting at, which was highlighted by Dan's recent memo, which Dan was really helpful regarding the Benson project, is that, you know, I think we should be thinking about what we can do to support the accomplishment of our goals downstream. Because what we've seen happen is we've seen aspirations, you know, stated and recorded in the bidding process. And then things go awry, not in a way that necessarily violates our contractual agreements. Sometimes it's understandable, but nonetheless, they go awry. And our end result is not what we want and need it to be, which, as you just said, we've seen for McDaniel and for Kellogg. And so what do we, as an owner, need to be doing to work with our contractors all along the way to make sure that they are able to fulfill those aspirational goals that we have? We've gotten burned here a couple of times where we just get to the end and we say, oh, that's a drag, you know? That's not what we want and need it to be. And at that point, it's too late. So I really appreciate the BAC looking at that. And we know that, frankly, I'll speak from my own sort of investigative work in our community. We know that other public owners do a little bit better job of nurturing minority business partnerships. And so what do we need to do downstream to better position ourselves to reach our goals?
Yeah, I also want to just echo what Director Constam said and appreciate, I mean, I feel like I should call you Mr. Peterson. I hope.
You can call me Tom. I'm very informal.
Thank you. I really appreciate you being here, you know, and being this longstanding BAC member and providing that institutional knowledge. But also, you have a, your area of expertise, you know, at the port was around business equity. So I think, I'm hoping that we can have upcoming conversations about this. I just checked your notes, by the way, and the Kellogg business contracting was at 4%, which is just, it's really, really low. We need to pull it up. I know that we plan to hire, the district plans to hire someone in a position that'll be focused solely on business equity. And I think that's a great idea. Hopefully, we can get an update about that. That may help, that outreach piece. But I echo again what Director Constam says around other, our neighboring public entities are doing quite a bit better. And we know we can do better because Lincoln is at 21%. So we're doing something right on some of the projects, and we're completely missing it on others.
Well, I've had my share of challenges when I was with the port. And we, you know, it's not uncommon for the best-laid plans by a contractor, and then something goes south, the sub goes out of business or whatever, and then they're scrambling. And then sometimes, all those public agencies, we're all competing for these same resources. And so there's a lot, it's a fairly complex issue and problem. But I, you know, I'm looking forward to figuring out how we can do better job or how we can help provide, or provide some guidance anyway for the district and approach this. The audit should bring out some things. I know I put the audit committee in touch with Kimberly from my former colleague at the port, and she was really great. She also ran the protege program, so I'm sure she'll have some good insight for them. Okay.
Tom, sorry. Tom, I just wanted to add really quickly to, I did sort of echoing those comments. I think it's great that the BAC's looking at it. I'm glad the auditor's looking at it. I would also be interested in recommendations of, is there anything the board can do that would assist staff in this? Whether it's a policy, whether it's giving more flexibility in terms of how we contract. But, you know, what are the things that, you know, that our staff need in terms of tools to make sure that this is happening, right? Whether it's enforcement tools, or incentives, or whatever it is to make sure that we are hitting those numbers. I think it's going to be really important as well.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping a lot of ideas will come out of your audit as well, along those lines. But like I say, I think our July meeting, Business Equity, is one of the, is the topic. So I'm hoping we can have a good discussion there. And we can draw from some of the various expertise we have within our group and some of their experiences as well. And maybe we can come up with some additional ideas as well.
Hey, Tom. I don't want to butt in on your presentation here, but I just wanted to bring out the point one. I appreciate you bringing up that the intent at the July meeting is to have this discussion, really have a holistic discussion around business equity. Really, really from top to bottom, around what the policies are, what the data says, what efforts that we put in place that have worked, which ones have not? What do other jurisdictions do? What are successful? What do they look like? So that's what we're intending to do both with the BAC. And I just wanted to point out to this committee as well. The intent is to come to this committee and have that same discussion. And so we've got a number of pieces moving at the same time, including our performance auditors. So we want to align those and have a robust discussion in a couple of venues.
And Dan, when? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone doing a landscape scan right now that you know of? I know the PDC used to do, every 10 years, I guess, did a study, a disparity study. I don't know, I haven't heard of one happening for some time. But is there anybody on staff that has the capacity to do a landscape scan, looking at the research from other jurisdictions to compare notes and maybe get some best practices in place?
Part of the scope of the auditors is looking at how other agencies operate. So that will be a piece of it. And I don't mean to imply that that will be all of it, but I think that will be kind of a good first look. And then I think we can expand from there.
And Dan, when do we get that external bond performance audit? Is that June?
I believe we are looking at a draft anticipated in June. We'll see if Marina, which way her head is moving, either up and down or side to side.
I think we're not expecting to see a final that we can share with the board until early July. And so we weren't sure we were going to be able to make it onto any of the committee, scheduled committee meetings prior to the summer recess. So we're just, we're kind of waiting to see. But our concern is we might not be able to formally present it until committees return.
Or you know how crazy we are. We might just have a summer meeting.
Hey, we'd love that. We'd love to be able to present it to you sooner. So we'll really be looking for those opportunities.
Who knows? Maybe it'll be in person. Okay, where was I? So I think the other concerns that came out were budget. Both Lincoln and McDaniel were experiencing challenges to COVID-related costs. But they're, you know, the team's working hard. However, they're working a lot of overtime, and those costs all add up as well. And so the budgets will be a challenge going forward. But I think, you know, everyone's working hard to try to make sure, make sure they can bring it in within budget. Benson is coming together well, as Marina stated. Budget is our big concern there as well. You know, these projects, and I experienced it myself back when I was the port, they tend to grow during the design. And you're constantly having these estimates that come back from your contractor that are above what you thought they were going to be. And you go through this VE or other types of exercises. But eventually, you hit a point where, well, it is what it is. And with construction costs escalating still and so forth, there's a possibility that Benson budget could be a challenge going forward because it's still, it's not done with design yet, and so it's not all bid out. So that remains a concern. But other than that, it's coming together well. And then, as Marina pointed out, nothing really on the 220 bond. Be looking forward to getting that kicked off. And, but right now, if I understand, they're busy trying to put their teams together and get other bodies first before you can get a lot done. So we appreciate that. As I also want to acknowledge, they continue to bring on some... they continue to bring on some, some great staff. Um, so even, um, that's encouraging and that's always, that's been a challenge from day one. But, uh, I've seen the OSM grow, uh, quite a bit, obviously. From the early days when Dan was, what was your role when I first started working here, Dan? But, uh, anyway, it's, it's a, it's grown to be a very sophisticated and a well-run, uh, organization. I'm, I'm really impressed with how it's, it's come together. So it's been, uh, fun to be a part of. I will say one other comment, uh, about the new board. One of the things that is, that came up when we first had our meeting, uh, our planning meeting with Marina and Kenichi was Kenichi asked a question about, um, job site culture. And, um, you know, is it safe? Are people being subjected to, are they being treated properly and so forth? Um, and, um, that's kind of a new program. Obviously I don't recall, uh, that being an issue when I was back in the day and, but obviously an important issue. And, uh, so this is an example of something that's evolving in the industry. Uh, and maybe other agencies are acting on it. I don't know, but it could be a, could lead to a policy issue for the district is, is to how you want to address this. And are there things in your contracts that, uh, we need to implement that help ensure we have a safe work, uh, work site for our employees? And there's a number of other, the, other of these potential policy issues that, uh, I recall some came up over the, my time, you'd, you'd have someone show up at a, at a BAC meeting advocating for solar, for example, or, or energy conservation or something. And, you know, it wasn't really clear what the policy was on some of those issues. So I, uh, so I'm anticipating with the new, with the makeup of the new board, they're going to be seeing some more of these types of issues where they're going to have a specific issue or concern that they're going to want to advocate for. And the, the district may or may not have a policy on it. So we'll be maybe serving up some, some areas where you may need to give some thought on, on how you want to address some of these issues. So I, I'm, um, I've kind of gathered a list of concerns and, uh, from the various, um, members to kind of get a sense of what their focus will be. And, uh, as we plan future meetings, we'll make sure we start, uh, addressing some of these issues and make sure we get them served up to you as well. So with that, uh, I answer any questions?
Tom, I really appreciate you bringing up that last point. And this is something that, um, I've had a few discussions about with regard to our performance, our business equity performance. Because what's, what's dissonant about some of those results is that they don't, don't align with our stated values as an organization. And PPS has come a long way in the last few years and your, your tenure with us in terms of articulating what our values are as an organization. We have a vision that we refer to with, you know, all of our work. We're about to deliver a strategic plan that's grown out of the vision. And so, uh, the fact that the BAC is thinking about that and, um, how our investing in our workforce, work, workplace culture connects and is aligned with our values and our vision as an organization is really exciting and important. And I think that, I think that's a critical piece of the business equity work too. Because, um, it's not just again, about those, those end results at the end of a contract. It's about what are we doing to nurture those partnerships all the way along in a way that authentically reflects our values in an organization. And I think you could say the same thing about, um, sustainability. And, um, there'll be some language around that in our strategic plan. So it's, it's wonderful that you guys are thinking that way. And speaking for myself as one board member, I think we would welcome um, an invitation to revisit any of our policies or concoct new policies where we see voids on, on some of these issues. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Not a problem. I, I faced the same challenge at my time at the port. Uh, we would, I remember art was a, a challenge for us. No one wanted to acknowledge an art program, yet we would always implement one in our, in our big expansion programs, but we never had budgeted for them. And, uh, you know, it was, so it's a, it's been a hot issue for me for a long time. Uh, so as soon as I hear these things, it, it, I'll raise, be sure, it'll raise a red flag for me and I'll make sure it gets elevated. So.
I also, um, want to say that that's another issue, the job site culture. That's really, um, personally important. And it's a place where, um, an extension of what we say we want to see in our workplace culture. Um, the city of Portland recently, um, had an incident on one of our job sites uh, with an outside contractor that, uh, where a noose was found and we had no, before this happened, hadn't had, uh, anything codified or, uh, written. And so of course we do have now a statement, um, in case something like this happens on, on a job site. And it would, I think, be great if we could be prepared for the worst, which is, you know, someone, some bad actor, um, doing something like that. Better to be prepared and have a statement prepared and have a policy to back it up. I'm also really happy that you brought that up. I know there are members of the BAC that are also interested. I'm also interested, Director Konstam is interested, Director Scott, Director Bailey. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we're all interested in, um, the culture of our, on our job sites. But I don't want to speak for them. Um, did anybody have any other comments?
I just, um, point, oh, sorry Scott.
I had entered.
Really quickly on that point, um, Dan, I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I would be interested, you know, our, we did sign up Portland Public Schools as part of the, um, Construction and Careers Pathways Project with other regional, um, governments. And as part of that workplace culture is, um, a, a key component of that, um, that, that there are things that I don't remember specifically. Um, as part of that program, what, what comes out of that. But I, I know it is something that we're collaborating with other governments to improve culture, particularly for women and people of color on job sites. So I, I'd be interested in the future, just hearing an update on, on how that's going and, and, and what that, what, 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 what actions we're taking as a result.
Yeah, not a problem. We can provide information about that program and then some of the other programs that, uh, our contractor has participated in as well.
So just wanted to agree with the, the workplace, um, culture issues. Uh, and also to say we're, uh, working on a policy on, uh, climate fossil fuel sustainability. Yeah, I just finished a draft that we're going to be discussing tomorrow. Um, so I want to make sure we double back. I know, uh, a couple of people on this, uh, in this meeting have been part of that process. So I want to make sure that we are, are in alignment with our bond work on that. Uh, Monoma County today came out with a resolution saying that any new building will be, well, they said fossil fuel free, but what they actually said was all electric. So the, yeah, those things are different. Uh, I was thinking, oh, are they going all solar and windmills? But, uh, so, uh, I don't want us making a statement like that unless, you know, we're, we're truly fossil free, but, um, that's the direction we need to go in sooner rather than later.
I, I'm going to be really curious about that because that was another, being an electrical engineer originally, how energy conservation has been my thing throughout my career and, um, and we, we've, we tried hard at the port, you know, we even had a lead platinum building. Uh, but, but it's challenging. Uh, and we had, we had done a study to figure out how we could be car, reduce our carbon footprint by 20%. Uh, and it was pretty enlightening how, what that meant. And, um, so I'll be anxious to hear, uh, hear about that because I guess kind of near gear to my heart. I've spent a lot of time on that subject as well over my career. So.
That's fantastic. Um, and so did I. And in fact, I'm, um, generating power right now. So much so that it's going out to the grid. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm providing power for my neighbors on either side of me.
Really? You know, solar?
I do have solar. I have a, um, three kilowatt system.
Oh, cool.
And it, it works even on cloudy days here in Portland. So it is really cool.
Well, I thought you were pedaling as we speak.
I am actually sometimes, but not today. But yeah, no, they're, they're doing their job upstairs. Um, I'm, I'm also really interested in, um, the carbon, the carbon piece and seeing us, um, you know, go to renewables as much as possible.
Well, I could talk a lot about that, but I don't want to, I don't want to bore you tonight. Another time maybe, over a beer.
That sounds fantastic. Um, were there any other comments, um, on the, on that BAC update or questions anyone had?
I think Tom, just speaking to the expansion of your agenda is just a great advertisement. Why diversity of, and representation matters? Because it just encompasses a lot more life experiences, a lot more viewpoints, and it just improves our collective work. So.
Yep, absolutely.
So I just gave a, um, presentation this week to a national conference about the, um, business case for diversity. And you want to have diverse, uh, people in the room, thinkers, because it does reduce your risk. It, now broadens your reach into the communities, reduces your risk in so many ways because you've got more eyes on the, on, on, on any issue. And also, um, just an interesting aside, usually diverse groups make better financial decisions. So I think for the bond accountability, uh, committee, that's, that's really apt. So thank you for serving, uh, Tom. Appreciate you being here.
My pleasure. Um, I'm glad you kept me around.
Me too.
At least I'll be able to see some, some more progress. Uh, and I'm, I'm hoping once, when I, when you finally have to say, all right, you've been here too long, you'll still invite me back to see the schools when they're done. Cause, uh, it's been a lot of fun.
We, we do have a protocol in place for, uh, we, we, we just say, we'll see you in a couple of months. You can take some time off, but um, we have your number still in your email. So hopefully you'll be around to mentor any incoming new, new, uh, new people. So. But for now we've got you. So that's great.
Yep.
Um, thank you so much. Um, we're going to move on to the long-term facilities, uh, plan. And I'm not sure who's, who's delivering that.
I can start us off. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Thank you very much. It's a, a real pleasure to be with you. We're up to some very, very cool work. We're about halfway through still. A lot of work to be done. Uh, which I will share with you this evening, but we will be back to present the final product. Um, probably to the full board in October. So I'll just look for some head nods. Can you all see my screen? Great, okay. So, long range facility plan, um, you can find more details on the project at pps.net/lrfb. Um, we'll be in posting progress documents to the site, uh, as well. So the outline for today, um, I'm going to give you a, a really brief overview of the operations document landscape. And that's just to help with some orientation and I think give some broader context to what this document is. Um, I'll give a long range facility plan overview, uh, including a process and timeline. And then I'll pass it over to Dr. Amara Pures to talk about critical race spatial lens. And then Karina Ruiz to talk about some, some key outcomes that we found so far. So just looking at the guiding documents within the operations group. Today we'll focus on the long range facility plan, um, but we'll review some examples on how these documents work to gather, to federate a complete story about how we translate our values into the built environment. So we're in a unique time for our group. Um, we are currently updating literally all of these documents. So quite busy. Uh, so we have the opportunity to coordinate for a shared vision for our schools. These documents all work together in coordination with one another. They, they all speak to different audiences and foreground different voices for different stakeholders. And just to illustrate that in a matrix, um, this matrix provides a little more detail about how the documents differ from one another. So you can see that the long range facility plan is, uh, has the widest range, both in terms of audience and stakeholders. Um, but it's also a document required by the ODE. We must complete this document every 10 years. So the previous long range facility plan was completed in 2012. So. Okay, so just really quickly, I'd like to unpack an example to illustrate how these documents differ from one another. Uh, so just looking at how our buildings can support social emotional learning. The long range facility plan will contain, contain statements like this. All buildings must support a continuum of social emotional learning, both inside and outside the classroom. Just an example, um, of course we would say more than that. But then looking to the ed specification, uh, we would then provide more detail on in more specificity for our spaces. So the ed spec will detail a set of performance requirements. Um, we see here a sensory path. The ed spec will describe both what a sensory path is and how it should perform. Um, in this case, an ed spec must, or excuse me, a, a sensory path must support motor development, sensory and emotional regulation and healthy physical outlets. Then we get to the really glamorous statements in our design standards, which are materials placed on the floors and walls must be compatible with district cleaning systems. And all materials on interior surfaces must be low VOC. So definitely an indirect statement about social emotional learning, but incredibly important and incredibly valuable. Uh, so that's all I had to say about kind of our doc, document structure. I'll pause for a beat, see if there are any questions about that. Otherwise I'll move into, yes.
I, I have a question. Sorry, go ahead. Um, I was just going to say, um, the low BOC materials are really good and that, that, that we're, um, being concerned about the materials. But if we're, um, we've got this climate policy and we've got, um, if we're using toxic chemicals to do the cleaning, we're impacting the indoor air quality. So I'm hoping that as these, um, documents are being updated, that we're considering, you know, less toxic materials to clean. I know it's a hard time to talk about, you're using vinegar, you know, during a, during a pandemic. Just that it'd be nice to, for us to be consistent across the board in terms of, you know, what we care about. And how, how we know that toxic chemicals impact, um, climate.
Absolutely.
And, and health.
I have a question, John, about, um, appreciate you making a reference to how the long range facilities plan will inform some revisions, perspective revisions in our ed specs. So can you or can someone speak a little bit to that process? How, how we intend to revise the ed specs once we have a long range facilities plan in place?
And so the, the ed spec and the long range facility plan are concurrent processes that we're, we're currently developing. So one specific example I can point to is the philosophical foundation for the ed spec that's currently being revised is universal design, trauma-informed design, and now critical race theory, um, which is a new concept for me and, and for, for much of what we're doing with the, the built environment. The, the, I believe I'm, I'm scheduled to come back and talk in detail about the ed spec in about a month. So I don't want to go too down, too far down this rabbit hole. Um, but, but there will certainly be downstream impacts, uh, as I think the, the the philosophical approach and also the long-term vision begin to saturate and, um, kind of infuse with ideas to their, their related documents.
That's great. So that work is underway now, those three new overlays on our existing ed specs?
Absolutely. So, um, we've done hundreds of hours of interviews with educators for the ed spec. Um, and are, are getting lots of input on universal design, trauma-informed design, um, in relation to the, the ADA transition plan. So for sure.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm really excited that the critical race theory is also being applied. Um, the built environment, I work in, you know, planning and sustainability and we're actually embarking on a spatial justice, uh, set of programs. And, um, it, it's a, it's a great consideration. I can't wait to hear more about it.
Other thoughts or questions? We're okay? Cool, okay. I will move on. Uh, long range facility plan overview. Uh, and just bear with me through this. I just want to give you some orientation and then we'll get to the cool stuff, uh, when I turn it over to Amara. Uh, so the purpose of the long range facility plan is to forecast the district's facility needs for the next 10 to 20 years. So, um, reaching quite a bit into the future. Uh, our primary purpose is to align facilities needs with the district. Our primary purpose is to align facilities' needs with the district's educational vision. And then we're committed to a plan that will advance racial equity and social justice in education. We're doing that through critical race theory, spatial theory, to prioritize capital projects. And we are using critical race spatial dialogues to garner feedback from our community in addition to program discussions. Put slightly another way, a long-range facility plan is an alignment of educational vision, enrollment and capacity and facility conditions. So we're going to look at the data from our FCA, our recent enrollment forecast. And then we're doing lots of conversations with our educational leadership. So just to speak to how long-range facility plan relates to a bond. This diagram outlines kind of an ideal sequence of events. Of course, we just passed a bond, so we're going to be set up really well for the next couple bonds. Again, this is ideal. Few districts ever are able to choreograph their work in this precise way. And we missed it by just a little bit this year. But again, we'll be in good shape for the future bonds. Just to speak to our governance structure a little bit. So we have our core team, which is some of the folks here. It's Dr. Valentino, Dan Young. Those folks, it's a cross-disciplinary team. So educators, engagement, enrollment and transfer planning, NOSM are involved in that. We have our crit coalition, which everyone here should have an invite to our summit for next week. And then we've conducted a host of community dialogues this past winter that we'll get to hear a little bit about in a minute. We are looking at all of these initiatives that are happening right now in the district. So it's a lot, there's a lot going on. It's a lot to get our arms around. But our hope is to federate many of these initiatives into a single vision for the future, or at least set us up for making really good decisions in the future. The document's going to look something like this. This is a bit of a bluff. We're a ways off from this. But just to give you a sense of what the thinking is and how this is all going to come together. Our phasing in timelines. So we began this project in November with a month, a couple of months-long listening and learning, where we were sitting down with different community groups, students, principals, teachers, whoever would hang out with us. Right now, we're working with our crit coalition to develop the ideas garnered from those conversations, to synthesize and analyze those findings, to reflect the voice and stories of communities. And then later this summer, we're going to move into an action and accountability phase, where we're really creating the document. We're sending that back out to the folks that we heard from and talked to, getting their feedback, and we're revising. And with that, I will pass it over to Dr. Pures.
Thank you, John. So part of the strategy that our team put forward was the use of critical race theory to really support the alignment of facilities plan with the district's commitment to racial equity and social justice. So putting critical race theory in conversation with spatial theory has offered a sort of integrated socio-spatial framework to understand and transform this really unique relationship between the built environment and equity in education. So we were going to do a super quick review of some of the guiding theoretical tenants that have really grounded our work, knowing that this will, you know, would really require more conversation. But it gets you an idea of what this lens is really inviting us to acknowledge, inviting us to examine, and more importantly, inviting us to practice. So we're going to share just a sample of some of those tenants. The first one is, you know, really a principle. We can go to the next slide, John. Can I move? Yeah, okay. So the first one is the idea that racism is embedded and ingrained in all aspects of society. And this is really important because often we think about inequity in education, but don't necessarily look at the planning practices or design practices that also function to reproduce inequity within education. So this has meant that we're paying very close attention to our practices. The second tenant is about dominant narratives. Dominant narratives, particularly in planning and design and space, are narratives like objectivity or neutrality or colorblindness, all of which we really acknowledge act to hide racial and social inequities. And so particularly in the business of sort of planning and facilities, we often think this work is sort of too technical, too objective, logical, universal, to be thinking about social issues around race and other dimensions of diversity. So paying attention to those narratives that act as if this work is neutral is one of the strategies we've been using to make sure that we keep connected the socio-spatial and spatial lens. The third tenant, which is everybody's favorite, is the idea that space is not neutral. And in particular, space is not racially neutral. And so part of what this really invites is for us to look at how space is actually more of a sort of cultural artifact. The idea that space often reflects dominant value and belief systems. And this allows us to really interrogate, how is space acting to normalize or reproduce the status quo in ways that we can actually transform and put in service to equity and inclusion? The next tenant is about the idea that advancing racial equity in facilities planning, for example, actually will help to further the district's commitment to racial equity and social justice. And the nice thing about this tenant is it just shows what our role can be to contribute to equity and inclusion district-wide. And then finally, the tenant, we really are excited about practicing in this project, is acknowledging the experiential, lived experiences, stories of Black Indigenous people of color and these communities, and acknowledging that when we hear from BIPOC communities, we actually hear the very stories that counter those dominant narratives, which act to conceal institutionalized inequity. So this has meant that so much of our work has been really amplifying the voice of BIPOC communities to really understand the sort of lived experience of educational spaces and understanding how space acts, and also being able to really understand the diverse ways in which people perceive space. But more importantly, the diverse ways people can reimagine how space can really work in service to equity and inclusion. So these are just a real review of what those tenants invite. Next slide. So we've been using that in engagement, and as John spoke about, we've just finished this listening and learning phase. So this has been a really important part of our work and being able to understand, but again, the socio-spatial context of neighborhood schools and understanding more largely the perceptions of community members. And so one of the strategies we developed was having community dialogues, where we invited people to share their personal experiences, ideas and perceptions, to create a more nuanced understanding of what some of the key pressing issues are impacting the school district and being able to provide input on those issues and emerging themes. So these were the guiding questions for our dialogue sessions. One was to just invite people to share their social identities. What we know is that our identities, our lived experience and our positionality shape the way we perceive space. And so what we wanted to do was to acknowledge our identities matter by inviting that to the conversation. We followed that up with questions that helped us to understand, how do you perceive traditional school space to communicate racial and other social inequities? And then finally, given your multiple identities and lived experience, how can school space actually advance racial equity and social justice? What are the socio-spatial ideas for creating a more welcoming and inclusive experience? So these were the broad guiding questions that drove our dialogue sessions. And I will now pass this on to Karina, who will talk about what we learned through these sessions.
Before I start, I just want to provide a moment to pause because we gave you a lot of information about the approach. And so want to pause for a moment before we start talking about the things we heard and how we're starting to apply those to just allow you to respond in any way or ask any questions of Amara about the approach.
So this is very interesting to me. I, you know, years ago read works that analyzed the spatial array of, say, prisons, hospitals, schools, all very similar command and control kind of layouts, but never from a specific viewpoint of race. So if you have some resources you can share or I can do some more reading on it, I'd appreciate it. I won't take up any meeting time. And again, always getting into the specifics and examples always helps ground me in this as well, so.
Great. Thank you for asking that, Scott. We've been working with some student interns who have spent the last couple of months building a repository of resources. So we can make sure and share that link with you that will provide all kinds of really interesting readings to, you know, get you thinking. So thanks for asking that.
I wanted to just give an appreciation for the discussion as a Black Portlander, also who grew up in, you know, in Guadalajara and in Caracas. Really understand what you're talking about here and appreciate you naming, just to name the elements that are going into this inquiry. And really excited to see what comes out of it.
Thank you.
You know, on the ground for our children. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Me too. Very inspiring. Amara, I was going to ask, it's wonderful to hear about your interns. I was going to ask of you and John and these extensive interview processes, are we talking to our students?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Amy. We've had quite a few dialogue sessions with students as young as third grade. We've had two classroom sessions with third graders who have an incredible critical race spatial analysis, even at that age. So we've had dialogue sessions with students. We have students who are serving on the crit coalition. And so our commitment has really been to make sure that our, all of our community engagement is BIPOC-focused and student-centered and really being able to track that amplified voice in everything we do.
Fantastic.
Okay, anything else before we start outlining kind of what are some of the things that we heard and how those have started to now apply themselves to the work of the crit coalition? So just that we should hear from third graders much more often. I mean, they're going to be inhabiting the building for a very long time. And they are really, they really add a lot, I think. It's wonderful to hear from them. Indeed. And I will congratulate your teachers of the classrooms that we went into. They had already done a lot of the social justice priming. And so when we went in, it was really just about, okay, how do you apply those lessons now to the built environment, right? Because that, I think, is always the harder link for even adults to make. I will say, quite frankly, the kids might have been more apt to make those connections than some of the adults. So it's, they were great conversations. So I totally agree with you. Okay, John, will you pass forward us one? Yeah, so what we identified as we went through, I can't even, I can't even count the number of hours of sessions, were these emerging facility planning issues, right? So we talk about them as socio-spatial issues, but really thinking about kind of how they inform our facility planning because we're talking about a 20-year horizon, right? And so if you think about tributes to white dominant narratives, things like what we heard from folks were the iconography in the forms of statues, murals, images, names of schools, as you're already dealing with, that act to perpetuate and celebrate white dominant narratives in school space. The next one is under representation of BIPOC communities, that the voices, histories, cultures and contributions of the BIPOC community are not readily reflected in the schools, in the architecture, the art, the images, flags, display cases in schools. The next one is the need to better reflect students and the local communities. So again, students, communities, local neighborhoods were neither integrated nor reflected in school space. Fourth one is unwelcoming and gatekeeping school entrances. So building approach, everything from the street to the school entrance contributes to an unwelcoming experience and the diminished sense of belonging for your communities experiencing diversity or communities on the margin. This idea of a school-community divide, right? That schools do not act or feel like community-owned resources due to insufficient space for community partners, as well as policies and building structures that strictly limit neighborhood access to buildings and grounds. The next one is monolingual space. So English-only signage and wayfinding acts to include, exclude, sorry, communities and families from navigating, engaging in and accessing school space. Sterile and rigid classrooms, so the lack of color, uncomfortable furniture, fixed spatial arrangements, and limited access to natural light really diminish comfort, a sense of safety, and discourage risk-taking and relationship building, right? Those are some of the connections that we heard. Individualistic classrooms. So traditional spatial arrangements discourage cooperative and collaborative pedagogies that really limit student agency and restrict the agility needed to foster the diverse learning communities that you're trying to build. And then binary space. So presenting gender as a socio-spatial, what we call kind of organizing strategy, can serve to other spaces designated for women and girls, for your trans community, your gender non-conforming users, right? So really thinking about the need to not think of spaces, to not think of programs as binary. Marginalized and hidden space. So school space dedicated to students is missing. It's often difficult to access, difficult to find, out of the way. And really, yeah, that was that one. And then finally, your unequal and inaccessible spaces. So both the idea that we heard that there was unequal access to or perceived difference in quality depending on both whether or not you were part of a BIPOC community and also socioeconomic class. And then also having accessible features like accessible playgrounds was strongly held by the group as well. So before I get into how we then apply these, I just wanted to pause for a moment to talk about, to have you talk about any of those, anything that you want to ask questions about.
So real quickly, I toured some schools in Finland a couple of years ago. And the furniture there for kids is really kid-friendly. And the spaces there that they have set up, it's completely, well, it's very different from here. And the other contradiction we face, they designed their schools to be physically open and welcoming to the community. We have to design our schools to be fortresses. And that's out of concern for student safety, but that's also racialized, given who goes to prison in this country and what those feel like. So design-wise, we have a huge contradiction because we want our spaces to be community spaces and open. And they have to be secure.
Yes, Director Betty, that's exactly right. And so what we're, what we're working, part of what we're doing, as you'll hear here in a minute, is working with the crit coalition to sort of unpack these and then also figure out where things are in tension and where, it's not an either/or. You know, we believe strongly that you can have safe and secure spaces that are welcoming and create a sense of belonging. But there are, it requires, what I like to think of these are as pause points, right? So that anybody moving forward with projects after this long-range plan, facilities plan is developed, will be able to look at these and say, okay, as we're coming upon this issue, we are required to pause and ask those most closely impacted by the problem to help us develop a solution, right? Any other questions?
Comment and a question, this is absolutely fascinating and kind of riveting. So I just thank you so much for this. It's really, it's really great. I'm going to pick up on Scott's point. I mean, all of these actually are things we need to be taking into consideration. I mean, I will just say, I absolutely hate chain-link fences. And I don't think I've ever shared this with school district staff. I was sort of holding my back pocket, but I would love a policy that said this district will never put up another chain-link fence anywhere on any district grounds, or actually any fence for that matter, because I think it again gets it to those school-community divide. And I think it's an interesting thought of, you know, even if our schools need to be secure, the buildings, you know, you know, less so grounds, and I think there are ways to meet that. But that's just one of the whole thing, and I think it's really fascinating. My question is how how easy is it to find this integration of critical race theory into, say, architecture firms, construction firms, you know, general contractors? And I'm thinking a little bit, I'm a, I'm a public finance person. And when I was in grad school 25 years ago, no one was talking about applying an equity lens, you know, when it comes to like public finance decisions or budget. But starting about 15 years ago, 10 or 15 years ago, that began to change. It's been a very slow changing process, but most, you know, it is now very common at conferences, you know, at seminars, at different places, like that's, that's all people are talking about. How do we apply, you know, racial equity lenses to budget decisions, finance decisions, spending decisions, et cetera? Has that, and so my, since I don't know much about the building, you know, and I'm hearing about a lot of this sort of application for the first time, is this a relatively new area that will be challenging to partner with people in the private sector? Or have they also been making this journey and we will be able to find, again, design firms, construction firms, et cetera, that understand this and can partner with us on this work?
Yes. So we, Brick Architecture is an architecture firm. This is, to answer your first question, yes, it is nascent. I will say, and not just because she's on the call and we have her on our team, but the work that Dr. Amara Pettis has created in linking traditional critical race theory with spatial theory to create what we're calling the Critical Race Spatial Lens is, like you can't find books on it other than her dissertation, right? You find pieces, you find articles. And so it is rather nascent. I will say that over the last probably three years, there's been an awakening, and it was accelerated obviously in 2020, about the fact that we, as an architecture industry, were complicit in designing ourselves into this situation. And we have a duty and responsibility to design ourselves out of this situation. And what that means is not just designing different outcomes, but designing different processes. And so that is why when we approached this work, we decided to approach it through that lens. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, and thank you. Thank you for doing this work. It's really great.
Yeah, thank you so much. I also, I mean, we talk a lot about racial equity and applying a lens. And we're really got, we've gotten comfortable about talking about it. It's actually, what do you do differently than what you've always done before? And I really love that you're addressing literally the foundational, the thinking that goes into, you know, designing a master plan and pre-planning phases and who's impacted and who's included is all really amazing. I worked for the Parks Bureau about 25 years ago. And at that point, we, at that time, we had just passed a bond. And we actually hired a Dutch firm to come in and they had taken thousands of photographs of kids, middle school kids and in outdoor spaces. And they never sit in a chair. You know, so they ended up designing furniture that was meant to be kind of lounged in, draped over, because that's how they noticed that kids were, you know, using, using the built environment. So I just, I really look forward to seeing what you, what you come up with, with particularly like in classrooms and in school, school entrances. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I know that you have other things on your agenda, so I'll try to move through these a little bit quicker here. But now in terms of giving you some examples, so we'll just take a couple of these tributes to white dominant narratives. With each of these, we have really compelling quotes, like the one that you see here, from students, from parents, from community partners, that then, John, allow us to dig deeper next into kind of what, how we apply this to, you know, this is where that intersection between the various documents that John was talking about, because some of these things belong in an ed spec and some of them belong in a long-range plan, right? So an example of how some of these can apply to planning principles is really thinking about the role of history in place, right? Thinking about Franklin and the renovation of Franklin, the modernization of Franklin. And the fact that what we heard from folks is, yeah, it was great. There are spaces that are great, but it still is, I still don't see myself as a BIPOC member reflected in this. And we continue to promote the inequities that have existed before us rather than using this design process as an opportunity to disrupt, right? And so now we find ourselves next, you know, really kind of struggling with the tie to, to spaces that don't feel comfortable, that quite frankly are antithetical to the BIPOC lived experience. And so partly a way that this really kind of manifests itself in the plan is next, is in thinking about, you know, analyzing what are the challenges, right? So obviously you have a number of buildings that are on the national or state historic registry. And oftentimes those same buildings have large BIPOC student populations. And so are there opportunities now moving forward to think about allowing some of your existing historical agreements, like you have with SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, to expire or to significantly modify them such that they don't become impediments to starting to really disrupt the, the building systems of oppression? Next.
I just would like to pause for a second on that third bullet point yet with there with regard to historic preservation. That is really a whole new lens and really important. And it's just a great example of how it's not just reframing the way we look at things, but dismantling the other structures that we're a part of that perpetuate just doing things the way they've always been done.
For sure. Yeah. I mean, I think that's what a lot of this work has been is really, it requires a critical, hence the word, examination of all, everything that we've thought about from a built environment standpoint. Next, John? Yeah. So another one that we'll take is unequal and accessible space as an example, if you move forward. So thinking about, you know, the quote here is one that really talks about inaccessible playgrounds. And so how that can manifest itself in a planning document. In alignment also then, I will say with the ADA Transition Plan that John is also working on, the way that we think about it from a planning perspective is next. To really think about developing guidelines around inclusive play in collaboration with the community, right? The long-range plan will then outline an implementation strategy that takes into account your existing playground conditions, community and educational vision, the financial constraints and kind of creates a plan for you to be able to move forward in that way. So next, we want to talk a little bit about what we're, now what we're doing with this information and how we hope you can get involved. So we have, as John mentioned earlier, we have a Crit Coalition Summit coming up here. Well, I should start in saying that the dialogue sessions that we held over the winter were both listening and learning, but they were also recruitment. Because oftentimes we go directly from a steering committee or a core team directly into a guiding coalition of hand-selected folks who sometimes, again, aren't those ones that are most closely impacted by the problems we're trying to solve. And so we decided to use the dialogue sessions that were BIPOC-focused and student-centered, often held in affinity group settings, to use those as recruitment tools to identify members for our Crit Coalition. And so now the work that we're doing with our Crit Coalition, next, John, is to really start to say, okay, we've recognized that if we think about trying to align your facilities with your educational vision, which is, as you recall, John saying is kind of one of the main purposes of this document, the PPS Reimagine has so beautifully talked about the graduate portrait and educator essentials and what are the educational system shifts needed to accomplish and support the inner rings. But a missing element is the fourth, what we're calling the fourth ring. And the purpose of the Crit Coalition is to develop the fourth ring that are really facility planning characteristics that then support educational shifts, that support educator essentials, that then support the graduate portrait. And so that's the work that we have moving forward. Any questions? And we invite you, I think John has extended an invitation to you all to attend that meeting. Really specifically in that meeting, what we'll be doing is we have already laid out to them the themes. We'll be bringing those back and then asking them, we'll share with them some of the ideas that we heard in the listening and learning sessions translated into planning language and then asking them to help us brainstorm other ones that can then serve to start to create those facility planning characteristics.
And that meeting, for anyone that's interested, is scheduled on the 22nd, Thursday, a week from today, from four to seven. And there should be, there would be an invitation in your inbox. I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Really appreciate that you're centering the voices of those who usually are, you have to work harder to get to and solving for the issues at those, at that level and watching the benefits trickle up. It's really exciting work. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having us. And we look forward to seeing you next Thursday.
Did anybody have any other last finishing, final comments before we move on to the BAC Charter?
This is slightly different from the 2012, the 2012 long-range facilities planning process. That was, sorry, that was a little snarky. This, this is incredible.
Well, I think it reflects the fact that, you know, in 2012 was 2012 and we've had new information coming in, particularly sparked by, you know, the racial uprising that happened in 2020 that forces us to actually address what we're hearing, address this new information. And I'm really glad to see that we, that we're doing it because of, because it's the right thing to do, but also because we, we have new information now since 2012.
It's partly that, but it's also really the depth of the effort with, you know, just the list of documents that was laid out earlier. This is, it's just way, way different. So all credit to our staff and assisting consultants on this.
And we have leadership that cares about these things. And that's also reflected in who's, who we've hired to do this work and our focus on it. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, I'd love to see your dissertation.
It's one of the resources. It's in the repository.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Our last and final item, and we might, we might, we probably won't get on time, add on time tonight. It's about six minutes till. But Dan, is this, is this your topic? The edited bond accountability of the charter?
It is. I'll tee it up and I'll be quick and then we can just, we can move to questions. I've got a presentation. It's just a few slides, but I'll just talk through it. And then if we get into some more discussion, I can throw, I can throw some, throw it back up for the discussion piece. In your packets is a redline version of the BAC Charter. And that's there for a couple of reasons. One, we're admitting BAC Charter because we passed a bond in November of 2020. So we're adding that scope of work into the charter. It was also an opportunity to align the charter language with the BAC deliverables. We were looking to better solidify the correlation between the BAC Charter, the BAC's deliverables and the BAC materials. Those are kind of three different components that all work together. And when they align really well, it's a really efficient process. And so the charter, as well as the materials updates and looking at how the BAC delivers their reports and their progress and their status updates, those are all, all things that we've been working on since roughly last fall. We've been looking at the material since, I think, last October. We approved the bond, of course, in November, so that adds to the scope of the responsibility of the Bond Accountability Committee. We've added new members. And because of, because of these moving parts, that's why, as Tom noted earlier, we had a Bond Accountability Committee retreat in January to go over all these pieces, make sure we're on the same page and make sure that expectations and responsibilities are understood very clearly between the board, staff and the BAC. So I'll, I'll pause there and just see if, if the committee members have had an opportunity to look through the redline changes. When I looked through it again right before this meeting, you know, my eye kind of caught, it looks like there's a lot of changes. Really, they're, they're pretty simple. They're just trying to clarify and reinforce what the primary deliverables are and cleaning up some, some language about what the, what the reporting process is. So with that, I'll pause and ask if there's any questions.
I don't hear any questions. I also don't have any, I don't have any comments. I just reviewed it again before our meeting today, this afternoon, and see the changes, but don't have any, a single comment.
I also don't hear any questions. And I think it goes without saying that if this isn't an overhaul, it's really just some clarification. So I'm not totally surprised that there are any questions. Next steps will be, we will take this, the updated version to the full board. The full board will vote and approve on the changes. And then that scope will be complete.
Do we need to formally approve this to send to the board or can we just send it to the board?
In past practice, there hasn't been a formal vote. It's more been what's, is there consensus of the group?
I think you probably should decide if you're gonna just refer it to the full board for a full vote. So we can state that.
Roseanne has spoken.
Go ahead, go ahead, Andrew.
No, so Roseanne, you mean, you mean you think we should take a vote to refer?
Yeah, or agree to refer it to the full board.
Okay, I agree to refer it to the full board. I think it looks great.
It's very formal, but I'm okay with that as well. So we'll make sure that that's on an upcoming agenda in the next few weeks. Maybe without the redlines. Or we can provide maybe both, both redline version and a, and a final version?
Happy to provide both and a staff report and a resolution.
Thank you for your work on this, Dan. And it looks like we have no other comments. Is there anything else tonight for the good of the order? Seeing as there's none?
We want you to keep your reputation intact, Michelle.
It's 5:59. I'm gonna say goodnight, everyone, and we'll see you next time.
I've got two minutes of nonsense.
Why don't we do that over a cup of coffee?
It sounds good.
Take care, everyone.
Okay, thanks, everybody.